Todd Collins, welcome. Thanks for being here today.
Thanks for having me.
You and the rest of us endured a long meeting last night because we're taping this the day after your September 22 long school board meeting. There was a lot of frustration that came out last night among both teachers and parents, I think, about the process, communication. And I'm wondering if you could share with us your own assessment of how well the district has managed through this crisis and in particular respond to the criticisms that you received last night, that you heard last night.
Sure. I'm glad you raised that first because that's obviously top of mind for everybody. I think, I mean, to step back and talk about the whole COVID experience, I think in the spring, the district did not do a great job. I don't think it did a great job pedagogically in terms of the education we provided to students. I don't think we did a great job with communication. A lot of people didn't do a great job, but that's not really an excuse or an explanation about why we didn't. And, you know, I was disappointed with that. I think we could have done a better job, even basic things like, you know, daily structure and schedule, more live presentation. It didn't have to be all the time or every day the way it is now, but we ended up doing very little. And I think maybe worst of all, we somewhat overpromised and underdelivered, which is one of the things that I feel strongly and I emphasize to the superintendent that we should not do. We don't want to set expectations. I'd rather, much rather do the opposite. So I think we had a very kind of weak start. We improved somewhat over the time, but it was a weak start. I think in the fall, things have improved. We're getting, the teachers, both the teachers and the district office staff really stepped up and, you know, there was training created for how to do distance learning. There were structure and schedule set up so that everybody would have a consistent experience. There were expectations set. We did a survey two weeks into the thing to identify where the rough spots were and how to, where we needed to improve. So I felt like there was a real, we stepped up our game, as did a lot of districts across the state and across the country. Now we're in a new phase where we're trying to figure out how to get kids back into school. And this is, you know, a very, very difficult process. I think what we heard last night was concern from teachers and concern from parents about the safety plan, about whether schools were going to be safe for people to be at, and some concerns about pedagogy and disruption. You know, what are the school days going to look like? How is this, is it going to be better? Would it be better just to keep kids in distance learning and keep a consistent experience? And I think those are all valid and important concerns. I do think what we saw in our, you know, the district did a survey last week. We've done surveys before. We also have the benefit of, you know, hearing from hundreds of parents by email and other ways. There's definitely a large group, and it seems to be a majority of parents who want to be, want kids to go back to school, want their kids to go back to school. So I think it's problematic if we decide not to offer that option, particularly since the county health department and the state are telling us that we should be able to do that. I'm told that at the next school board meeting next week, there'll be a representative from the county health department who will be talking about why they believe schools can safely open and why it's important that schools be open. So I think that'll be helpful because I think, you know, it's one thing to hear it from district administrators or even board members. It's another thing, you know, we rely heavily on the county health department for their expertise. I think board members said that over and over last night. And so it's, I think, refreshing and helpful to have it come from the expert, not from us. I think, I mean, this process has exposed some weaknesses that I think were always there. One is communication generally. I don't think, while we've improved on a lot of things, and I hope I get a chance to talk about them in this half hour, communication is one of the things we are still weak at. And actually, something that I've decided and what I'm going to propose and promote to my colleagues is that we should reverse our prior position for the last several years and hire a information officer for the district. I think we've relied on our, you know, our senior staff to do their own communications work and just between, just between the pressures of all the things that we have to do and their natural talents and abilities and the needs of the community, it's just not working well enough. So we have money. I mean, you know, we used to think this was not as important and we should put that money toward educational resources. Now I think it's more important than ever. So I'm going to recommend that we hire a full-time communication officer and kind of offload that from the senior staff and just focus on doing a better job of consistently communicating.
So Superintendent Austin has placed a lot of emphasis on his own communications with the public and parents over this period of time. They've written a lot of words that are on the website. He's held these online sessions. As president of the school board, the elected school board, do you have any regrets in terms of you as the board president or other members of the school board reaching out more to the community other than at board meetings when people are being given one minute to speak? We haven't seen a lot of visibility outside of the board meetings of any of the five of you, to my knowledge.
Yeah.
Obviously, in COVID, it's hard to be visible, but there are alternative ways to hold forums and.
Yeah. No, that's a question that I thought about a lot during the spring. And you saw different elected officials in different bodies do different things. I mean, here in Palo Alto, I know the city manager and mayor Fine did a series of, you know, kind of one hour, I can't remember exactly the format, but of events. And I talked to the mayor about that to kind of understand what their experience was. And I thought about whether it made sense to do that here. One of the things that colored my, so, I mean, just to address your question directly, sorry, to address your question directly, I think it might have been helpful. I don't think it would have been very helpful. And because the void, the void that we were trying to fill was so large, and I think the board had not a lot to add to what the superintendent was saying. I mean, we might have said it differently or couched it differently, but in terms of outward communication, I think the staff was doing, you know, doing what needed to be done. I didn't always like the tone or the format or the consistency, but it wasn't like I would have something different to say. I did think, one of the things, as you know, Bill, is that traditionally the board president, which is a rotating position on our board, has not prominently, has not been a prominent position. It's somewhat different than the mayor position. Like, we don't do a state-of-the-city equivalent. In fact, and I think the ethos has been that we are a board team and the president is a presiding officer, but not a, not the spokesperson for the board the way, except in, you know, significant situations like, you know, a fire happens and someone needs to talk to the media. So I felt reluctant to step forward and kind of break that tradition and say, hey, I'm going to be here and I'll speak for the district or speak on behalf of the board in public settings. And maybe that was a wrong decision, I don't know. But I didn't feel like it was a good precedent to set for, because I like the ethos that we had, that we are a governing team and that, you know, we speak at our meetings as a body. So, but it would have been, it was definitely something I considered and might have been a good idea, just not what we pursued.
So the meeting last night revealed the teachers, a significant number of teachers are not on board with the safety plan. Do you, it sounds like you think that there's been a lack of communication sort of underlying all of this, but do you also think that there is anything to be done, like providing more resources or reassuring them of the fact that they have resources, PPE and that kind of thing? Are there concrete steps that should be taken now to bridge that gap come October?
Yeah, I think some of it's communication, some of it's action. You know, I participated in a meeting this morning about testing vendors, about, and how to structure a testing plan that will meet the needs of our district, meet the needs of our teachers, keep people safe. And I think we are, you know, well along on that. I think we'll hopefully be able to announce something relatively shortly. I think that's really important because it's a very concrete and specific action that addresses the core concerns of, hey, how do I know that other people in my building don't have COVID? A second thing is the work we're doing with ventilation, which I've been heavily involved with. You know, I've toured probably half the schools now with our facilities team, looking at individual rooms, opening HVAC closets to see what's in them, you know, pulling out filters, talking to the vendors to see what we actually can and cannot do. I've actually read the 200-page Eichler report that was referenced last night. It's actually pretty interesting if you like that kind of thing. So I think doing things to, and so it's not just, but it's not just fixing those things or, you know, that's like a maintenance punch list, basically. It's communicating that they've been fixed. It's like showing people. So one of the things I asked the superintendent, but going back to testing, asked the superintendent about is people are concerned that COVID cases are happening and they don't know about them. Why don't we have a webpage where we show the number of incidents that happen in every building every week? And it doesn't have to be, you know, we don't have to spend a long time building a big dashboard and updating it continuously. Let's like, let's just start with that. Because I think that will give people a lot of comfort that there are, have not been many cases. But if there is a case, they'll know. I think that kind of, you know, action coupled with like direct, oh, so tying it back, sorry, to the ventilation thing, it's like, you know, here's this 200-page report. It's not very user-friendly, but it does have a, you know, a sufficiency evaluation about airflow in every single room. And my view was, we should turn that into something that we can post on the door of every single room in that building to give people confidence that the airflow has been examined and determined by a third party to be sufficient. I think that's really useful and important because otherwise, how would people know? So I think it's the action and the communication of the action that need to happen. I don't think it's kind of getting people, you know, just talking to make people feel better, I don't think it's going to address people's concerns in a meaningful way. I think it's action and communicating the action.
Okay.
And I think we're, I'm, I think we're going to move in that direction.
You mentioned last night that the district's worked on dyslexia, has sort of fallen by the wayside amidst COVID, understandably. What issues are you concerned that the board has mainly lost focus on and the district staff has not been able to focus on that you really want to advocate for if reelected?
There are two big things. One is, I mean, so the plan that we have and the plan that we were going to implement. So the plan that we had involves universal screening of all children K through two and training of both literacy specialists and all K through two teachers in dyslexia identification and teaching skills. Both of those were disrupted. Where, I think you heard from Assistant Superintendent Brown last night that administering the test to students was disrupted because the teachers have to have a connection. It's very difficult to do over, I've seen the, it's called the SheaWit screener. It's difficult to do over a Zoom link. And so we've really fallen behind on our identification program. I don't think we'll lose that because it was successfully done last year, but we've lost it for now until we can get back in person. On the training, we heard, we heard the idea that we're going to resume that and get it back going. I just worry in the fog of everything we've got going on that that's not going to be a sufficient priority unless it's driven by the board. And that's why I don't want, you know, what we had last night was what I don't want, which was an ad hoc reaction to a question and here's a list of all the things we're doing and nothing's written down, there's no way to remember it, there's no way to say, hey, two weeks, two months, a week, two weeks from now or a month from now, do we actually do the things we said we were going to do? It's like, that's a recipe for not getting things done. So I think it's important that we have, revisit the plan, say the plan's been changed because of all the things that have happened, but here's the, here's the new plan and let's make sure we do the things we're going to do. The thing, the other part of it is the things we're going to get done. We talked about last year, as you probably remember, is doing a deep dive into curriculum, particularly around the concept of what's called structured literacy. That's a core concept in literacy education about how do you teach kids to read, especially struggling readers? And we have not been a district that's adopted that approach, and there are many in the, around the country who feel that particularly for low-income kids with dyslexia or even somewhere on the dyslexia spectrum or other kids who do not have supports at home to learn to read, that this kind of structured literacy can be very valuable. If you look at our literacy numbers for low-income and minority students, it is not good. And it is, we're only about 20%, 25% of low-income Hispanic students in the district are reading at or above grade level by third grade. And by that time, we've had them for three years, they should be reading. So that's a pretty serious problem, and that number has gone down over the last five years. I mean, we don't have last year's data, but up to 2019, that number had actually gone down across the district. So I'm really concerned that we may not be using the right curriculum to teach those students. And that, that was one of the things we were going to do that this fall. We're not doing it this fall, we just don't have the bandwidth, but I desperately don't want to lose that thread. So I think that's what Ms. Baten-Caswell was trying to raise, that's what I, I also tried to raise, and I want to make sure that we, we don't lose that thread and we look at curriculum, which is the foundation of, you know, it's nice to add a little resource here, a little training there, but the way, the curriculum we use is one of the chief determinants of how kids do.
I want to ask you about relationship with the teachers. Obviously, this has been a rough patch here of the last six months in terms of the working through the teacher concerns about returning to school and the live streaming. And there's a lot of issues here that have been, that have created some tension. I haven't seen much evidence of how the district has worked with teacher groups within the schools outside of their dealings with the union. And I wonder if that's true, and if it is, why? And what we've learned from that experience? Because it does seem to me that there is a feeling on the part of at least a significant number of teachers that they weren't involved in the process that you're going through now as a governing board. And what I suspect the answer is to that is that, well, we've been working very hard with the union to deal with these issues and they speak for the teachers. But I'm going to let you respond to that and share with us your insights.
Well, you're a great interviewer because you give me both the question and the answer.
Right.
Thank you.
Just wanted to cut it short.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I've gone on too long. I think that's a hint that I should probably shorten my answers, so I'll take it. Yeah, I think that's a large part of it, is that we've been in a higher level of continuous negotiations with the teachers' union than any time anybody can remember, basically continuously from March until today. All through the summer, you know, multiple times a week, both formal and informal settings, multiple MOUs. So there's a very, much higher degree of bandwidth there, and a lot of the senior staff attention is focused on that because it has to be. I mean, that is the bargaining unit. They get to negotiate the working conditions, so we need to, we need to address them. I agree with you, though. I think a weakness of our approach has been that the rank-and-file teacher, the teacher, you know, who does, you know, has an affiliation with the union but also has an employment relationship with us, feels like they're not involved. And I think that is part of what has fed some of the frustration that you hear from teachers. And I think that's a, that's something I'd like to see us change. I mean, I don't think it was a great job. I don't think it was a huge problem before COVID. I think there was a good relationship between, mostly we rely on principals to work with the teachers in the sites, and I think the principals were doing so and still do so. But I think with so many decisions being made at the district level now around COVID, I think the teachers feel that they want more of a voice in that, and we should figure out a way to do that outside of the relationship with the union.
Is that something you've just come to realize or did you think that earlier on in this process? I mean, it just seems to me that the union has its role to play, but we can't as a district take the view that that's the way we communicate and engage our teachers. And had that engagement occurred much earlier, I think we would have been more likely to have teachers better understand what the district is trying to achieve and that it's listening to the teacher input as it goes through that process.
I completely agree.
So where, where did that fail to happen? I mean, is that, is that because of the superintendent's instinct that, boy, we've got to manage the union, that's where the, that's where all the potential landmines are? Or why did we take that approach?
I, I do think the superintendent is focused on, and maybe appropriately so, focused on making sure we manage the relationship with the union. I mean, think about it this way, if the relationship with the union, if you think about the relationship with the teachers and employees and the relationship with the union, if the relationship with the union goes wrong, it leads to catastrophe, right? Because if you can't get an agreement with the union, you can't operate. So that's a big problem if you don't have a solid relationship with your union leaders and you're not on the same page with them. So we can't neglect that. We have to, by law, negotiate working conditions and impacts with them.
But don't you kind of empower them when you don't make your own efforts to?
Well, yeah, that's a, yeah, to the other side, I just want to say that we can't ignore that, but I think we have set the, set the balance way too much on that side and too little on the other side. And I think that's partly, you know, the superintendent's inclination or just his management style under these particular circumstances. I wouldn't say necessarily all the time. It may be a bandwidth problem, but I definitely think it's something that I, it's something I realized over the summer, that we were kind of not doing the things we needed to do, and we're hearing from teachers, hey, I'm hearing about this plan because we're coming up with the plans for the fall, but I'm like not. And it was harder in the summer, as you know, because teachers don't work in the summer. So, you know, it's like, how do you engage a bunch of people who actually aren't, aren't actually working, aren't getting paid? And, you know, it, it's still a problem today. So I do think it's something I've talked to the superintendent about, I think others, other board members have talked to the superintendent about, and I, I think we're looking for ways to engage better with teachers as employees, as partners, as opposed to as union members. Or I should say, in addition to as union members.
So four years ago, you ran on a platform that included a goal of data-driven decision-making. And I just wanted to ask you how you think that you've forwarded that goal during your tenure.
Thanks for raising that. I definitely did, and I feel good that we have moved the needle. As you, one of our favorite phrases now is moving the needle, and I really believe in that because the needle implies there's a metric and you're like watching the needle move against the desired metric. We've made progress, but not as much as I would like. I think we have, if you look at the Palo Alto promise, there's a section called Moving the Needle, and it calls out the state dashboard, the CASP dashboard, as, you know, kind of the ultimate metric of our success. I take that very seriously. In fact, it's, it's very devastating for me that we don't have CASP numbers this year, and I really hope we have them next year. Because that's how we compare ourselves to how we did in the past and how we, how other people, how we're doing compared to others. And without that, we can always tell ourselves we're doing a great job. Because, you know, without a yardstick, you never know if you grew. So I think putting that in place and getting everyone to agree that those are important metrics to look at and measure our overall success is a big step. We never did that before, so I think we're doing it now. I also think we have become a more numbers-driven organization in general. Again, a good example was the survey that was done now almost a month ago, two weeks into the, into the, into the new school year about how distance learning was going. That had, I think, 4,000 responses broken down by class, by, by school and grade and in the secondary schools by what department it was in. And so it wasn't a teacher evaluation, which as you may know, we can't do without bargaining with the teachers. But it was, it gave the principals and the district office a way to identify where the high spots were and where the rough spots were in real time. I mean, two weeks into the district, like literally, we closed the survey on a Friday and we had the results by Sunday. And so it was able to point them to, hey, English at ninth grade at this school seems to be doing great. That's fantastic. But in math, in 10th grade, we seem to have a problem. Hey, principal, good idea to go focus, go talk to the math department and maybe drop in on some of the classes and figure out what's going on. We saw, for instance, that, I mean, I use English and math as an example, English tended to go, be very positively reviewed at both high schools, and math tend to be much less positively reviewed at both high schools. And there was some variation within them, but there was no doubt about the pattern. And it was interesting because I would have told you that math was an area that would have lent itself to distance learning. It doesn't. And so we looked, we really dug into the data to identify who was doing a good job, who had actually maybe cracked the code some, and see if we could figure out what practices they were doing that could be spread to others. So this kind of managing through data was not something, I don't think it's something you see widely in education outside of a few, very, Long Beach is a district, district that manages heavily through data, but I think they are the rare exception. And I, I'm pretty happy that our district has increasingly kind of taken the view that, yeah, hey, looking at real-time data is, is very important. Another good example is the DF list that are on the board agenda now every, at the end of every grading period, where we're literally, we love that because it is, most of our indicators are way lagging indicators, right? We get the S-Back scores, you know, months and months after the test, and then we can't even change things until the next year. So essentially, that's 18-month, you know, data gathering and reaction loop. DF list, we know in real time, at the end of the quarter or the end of the trimester, how many kids were on the DF list, how that compared to last quarter, to the same period the year before, what the composition of those kids is by grade, by school, by, and so we're able to intervene while it can still make a difference in those particular kids' experience. So I think that was, I mean, you've, and you've heard me wax rhapsodic about these DF reports because we struggle in education for real-time indicators, and that's been a great one. One more just to pile on is the attendance. You know, we have regular chronic attendance reports now, which we never had before, and what you find out is Palo Alto PAUSD is not a great district from a point of view of reducing chronic attendance. We have higher chronic attendance and chronic absence than the average district. And so if the kids aren't there, they're not learning. So that's something, again, we know by school and by grade, and the principals are like given the task to, hey, your numbers are not good here, you've got to do something, chase down these kids and figure out what's going on. So I think those are good examples of the kind of thing we're doing. It's not going to be, we're never going to have a big dashboard where we can manage PAUSD by remote control. It's not that kind of thing, but using data in a very direct and pointed ways to inform our decisions, and especially in real time, I think is something we've started to do and I think will pay big dividends.
To what extent do you think Dr. Austin has been integral or key to that?
Wouldn't, none of that would have happened without him. The DNF report was his idea. That was 100% his, hey, this is something I know we can produce, let's bring that to the board, let's, and then once we saw it, we're like, yeah, we want this every time. It's a great. I don't know if he had done it at another district or what, but we had never even heard the idea before, and that came from him.
What's your assessment of the current state of district's leadership in light of the intense turnover, the change in superintendent during your last year, four years on board?
You may be nervous there for a minute because maybe there was turnover I didn't know about. I actually think, so I think a lot about turnover because I think longevity of people in their positions, if you look across school districts all across the state and across the country, is one of the chief indicators of school districts that are going to perform well. It's very hard to. It's very hard to improve your performance when the leadership or even the rank-and-file is frequently changing. So one of the things that we did, starting four years ago, is we identified that we had a, we didn't have the leadership team we thought we needed to be successful, and there's been approximately 80% turnover in the senior leadership team, what's called the executive cabinet. I think that was important and necessary, and I feel that we've upgraded significantly in basically every position. And I feel very good about the leadership team we have today. I think we've got some areas that we can improve, but I think we've done a good job. A little-known fact, I'm glad you asked about this because it's something I don't have a chance to talk about very much, but I think is really important. If you look at turnover among principals and teachers, I've got the principal turnover list going back to the year 2000, so 20 years now. We have, the last two years have had the lowest level of principal turnover of any two years in the last 20. We had two principals change last year, both at the high school, one was promoted and one left. So all the other principals were the same. So that's never happened before in PAUSD. In addition, you know, I remember the chow-down, the teacher, teacher opening event that we have, maybe the first year I was on the board, we had 100 new teachers, 100 new PAs who teach. This year, we had 35. And that's because we have many, much lower turnover among teachers than we've had in the past. And I think that is a tremendous accomplishment. I give that one primarily to Dr. Austin, who I think has invested, and, you know, this was the board's direction, the board's goal, I think, has invested in building our organization and building our culture and giving people the sense that they belong to an organization that cares about them, is going to develop their career, is going to attend to their professional development, and is going to be an organization as opposed to a collection of individuals or schools. And I think that's what people want, and that's a very important thing that people want in their career. And so I think giving it to them has paid dividends in that people are sticking around.
That's the perfect place to leave it. We're out of time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Chad Collins.
Thanks for having me.